Okay, good morning, everybody. I'd like to call this public meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And I'd like to introduce today James Joyce, who is going to lead us in the pledge. He's currently serving as the chaplain here at the Lackawanna County County American Legion Post 121 in Scranton. He served in the United States Army and Pennsylvania Army National Guard for 21 years, from 1980 to 2001. He joined as a private and retired as a sergeant, and he currently lives in Scranton. And a fun fact is today's his birthday. So happy birthday, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks for being here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If everybody would remain standing for a moment, I would like to have a moment of silence for the family of Mid Valley High School graduate Eddie Kaufman. And for Eddie Kaufman, he passed away last week following a hard-fought battle with leukemia. He was diagnosed in October of 2024 while he was a Roanoke college sophomore. And if we could have a moment of silence for him and to keep his parents, Brian and Melissa, and his entire family in your prayers. Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last Commissioners' meeting.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the Board on agenda items only. Would anyone like to address the Board on agenda items? Okay. Seeing that there is no one, we do have two proclamations that we're going to present this morning. The first is a proclamation declaring the week of October 5th through October 11th, 2025, as Juvenile Justice Week in Lackawanna County. I'm going to read that proclamation into the record, and then I'd like Judge Regirio, who is the Family and Juvenile Court Judge, the Honorable Judge Frank Regirio, to come up and say a few words. And if our President Judge Gibbons wants to come up and say a few words too, we would appreciate that. And we also have here today our Chief Juvenile Probation Officer, Melissa Pavlowski. So I'm going to read this into the record, and then they'll come up and say a few words. Whereas Lackawanna County's juvenile justice system is charged with providing programs of supervision, care, and rehabilitation, which provide protection of our communities, the imposition of accountability for juveniles, and the development of competencies to enable children to become responsible and productive members of our community. And whereas the mission of the Lackawanna County Juvenile Justice System is to provide prompt and fair justice to all individuals and families that come before the court by promoting family stability through a strong community support system. More specifically, the court adheres to and adopts the standards proposed by the Juvenile Court Judges Commission and the balanced and restorative justice philosophy. And whereas the mission is premised on the belief that crime victims, communities, and juvenile offenders should receive tangible benefits from their interactions with the system, and that victim restoration, community protection, and youth redemption should be equally considered and emphasized. And whereas employees of the Lackawanna County Juvenile Probation Office provide a vital link in the juvenile justice system and exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism when performing their duties. Now therefore, we, Bill Gahan and Chris Chermak, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through October 11th, 2025, as Juvenile Justice Week in Lackawanna County. And if you'd like to come forward now and say a few words, we'd appreciate it.
Good morning, everyone. Commissioners Gahan, Commissioner Chermak, and your administration. This is a little different point of view for me over here at this podium, but one I'm proud to be at, and I want to thank the Commissioners and their staff and administration today for providing this opportunity. Commissioner Gahan, in that proclamation, you mentioned the term balanced and restorative sanctions. And balanced and restorative sanctions is precisely what the juvenile justice system is based upon. It's the balance between the sanctions required to address the conduct that precipitates the juveniles appearing before the juvenile court. But it's also the balance and the restorative sanctions, and that's the imposition of the correct sanctions through empirical-based data and platforms that we use in the juvenile court system to help us determine the best programming for those juveniles that appear before us. One of those you'll be addressing today, the Advent Program or system that you've heard about. That's a very important, we think, a very important system that we'd like to implement downstairs, which will allow our juvenile probation department and those that really have the boots on the ground and are dealing with our juveniles on a consistent basis, another tool in their toolbox to help address issues as they arise, to not only address, again, the sanctions that need to be imposed, but the restorative balance to put the juveniles and the families back into a productive place. I say downstairs all the time, our goal is simply to put people, put juveniles and families, hopefully, in a better place when they leave us than which we found them. And through the great work of our juvenile probation department. And I can't say enough about them. It starts with our President Judge, which allows our juvenile probation department the autonomy to do what they need to do based on the experience they have. We're led by an amazing group downstairs. And that's not just my words. That's on a state level. They've been commended, and they've been recognized by the JCCJC, which is the Juvenile Commission, the Juvenile Court Commission of Juvenile Court Judges. And that's something to be proud of. We have 67 counties and a great number of juvenile probation departments. And our department, quite frankly, is in the top five. And that's as a result of their leadership, good work, and the collective experience that's downstairs. Their hearts are in the right place. We work hard. We know we can only do, because the administration, through the budgetary process and through your listening, allows us to do that and provides us with the tools necessary. So it's not just what we do downstairs. It's what we do collectively. So this is a thank you to everyone today, and the acknowledgement that it's not just Juvenile Justice Week. Really, every day, we should be considering juvenile justice and the impact that it has. Because unlike the adult system, where it's, I mean, the adult system is typically about retribution. It's typically about punishment. Again, balanced and restorative sanctions. It's the one court where we have the opportunity, because we have them at a young enough age, where with the right programming and the right experience, we not only change lives, we make communities better. And that's what we attempt to do here in Lackawanna County. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Judge. And I just want to publicly thank you again, the entire team here at the county, and President Judge Gibbons, Frank Castellano, who's back there, the court administrator, for all the work that you do, which is so important. I mean, these people are literally on the front lines every day, dealing with some very serious problems. And I know how passionate you are about all of these issues. So we just thank you very much for all that you've done and all that you're doing.
And thank you. And I'm glad you brought up Mr. Castellano, and I was remiss in mentioning him. As well, I'd like to bring up Judge Dempsey, who could not be here, because she's downstairs doing PFAs right now. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you could come up, we'll take a picture with the proclamation.
Hi, Pop. Thank you. Trace, you don't have to start your timer, I promise you. I have a courtroom full of people waiting for me over there who want to get their driver's licenses back. So we'll see how that goes. But I just want to take a minute to comment, because you all remember what happened in Luzerne County back at the turn of the century. And I had the privilege to be on the Interbranch Commission on Juvenile Justice, which was a collection of lawyers. I was a magistrate back then, magistrates, judges, defenders, prosecutors, and members of the general public. And our task was to investigate what happened in Luzerne County with the juvenile justice program there and come out with recommendations and a plan to go forward, all based around what Judge Regirio just talked about. And so, from my vantage point back then, and now having the privilege of being on the Lackawanna County Court, I can say without hesitation that our juvenile justice system here in Lackawanna County is one of the best, if not the best, in the state and is under the most competent leadership. You know, as President Judge, there are a lot of things that I have to address and worry about. I don't worry about these guys. And that's a testament to their expertise and their ethics and their work ethic, too. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for what you do. Thanks for my time. I'm going to go over to the Angry Mob, and at least Bob Bowles isn't over there, so I'm okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it. Okay, we do have a second proclamation. And this proclamation is declaring October 24th, 2025, as World Polio Day in Lackawanna County. And I'd like to ask Joe Ricardo if he would come up to the podium. Joe is from the Rotary Club of Scranton and will be accepting this proclamation. Whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the world. The Rotary motto, "Service Above Self", inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus, and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative to immunize the children of the world against polio. Since then, polio cases have dropped by 99.9%. And the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. This year marks the 75th anniversary of the polio vaccine developed by Dr. Jonas Salk at the University of Pittsburgh. And whereas to date, Rotary has contributed more than $2.9 billion in countless hours to protecting 3 billion children and is working to raise an additional $50 million per year to leverage maximum impact by a two-to-one match from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, disease surveillance, and educational materials. There are over 1.2 million Rotary members in 45,000 clubs in 200 countries that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and environment in their local communities and abroad. Now therefore, we, Bill Gahan and Chris Chermak, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2025, as World Polio Day in Lackawanna County. And here to speak again is Joe Ricardo. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Commissioners Gahan and Chermak, Mr. D'Abilio, other officers and staff of the county, members of the general public. It's an honor to be here. It's hard to believe that 75 years after Jonas Salk's vaccine, one of the major milestones in medical history, that we're still dealing with polio in third-world developing countries. It's only endemic in two countries in the world, in Pakistan and Afghanistan. But there are over 30 countries that are what we call polio-affected, at risk of having polio. Children still suffering from this disease when there's been a proven vaccine in existence for 75 years. We saw last year in Gaza, a child was afflicted, was paralyzed by polio. So Rotary is committed to ending this disease. And it's, to me, it's always struck me how unfair it is that depending on where you're born on the map, what country, longitude and latitude will determine if you die from a disease that is otherwise preventable and treatable. Diseases like malaria, tuberculosis, are still killing people, millions of people, where in developed countries, there are easy-to-access remedies and treatments and medications. The World Health Organization has saved over 150 million lives with vaccines throughout its history. And this year, we celebrate the 80th anniversary of the United Nations also. There is a growing assault on science, a growing assault on vaccines, even ones that have been proven to work. None of us in this room hopefully have had polio or know anybody. There's a good chance we may know somebody that has been afflicted with polio. But the reason we didn't get polio is our mothers had us immunized. So, you know, Rotary's all about the message about protecting children and helping to end the scourge of polio worldwide. For the third year, we're going to be gathering next Thursday at the Geisinger Medical College. We'll have over 150 high school students and their teachers. And we're going to talk about not only polio, but the eradication of other diseases that are really plaguing the world. And we see in the United States, we're seeing the issue of measles rising to epidemic proportions. We're also, we saw just three years ago in a case of polio in upstate New York, because it's only a plane ride away. If you're traveling to a country in Africa or Asia and somebody contracts polio and comes back here, they could spread it, especially in communities where the immunization rate is very low, where children aren't vaccinated. And again, that's where this assault on science is coming in, where parents think they do not need to have their children immunized. So I think it's important that we just keep the light shining on credible science. And Rotary will continue to do its part to help not only eliminate polio, but other diseases. I want to end just by saying, it was the campaign to eradicate polio that really began with Franklin Roosevelt and the March of Dimes. But our effort to eradicate polio, led by UNICEF and the Gates Foundation and other organizations, really created the template that allowed us to deal with COVID-19, to deal with other health emergencies that arose in this century, when it really created a blueprint for how to deal with public health emergencies. So hopefully, we will all trust science, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Joe. And if you'd like to come up. Okay, now we'll get into the business part of the meeting. The first ordinance is 25-0252.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is ordinance number 300, authorizing the issuance of a tax and revenue anticipation note series of 2026 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15 million. Whereas the county has determined to accept the proposal of Essex Securities LLC Jersey City, New Jersey, where one or more signees designated in writing by the county as purchaser or placement agent for the purchase of its tax and revenue anticipation notes now therefore be ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the county in lawful session duly assembled as follows. The county hereby exercises its power and authority to borrow money and then authorizes the issuance and sale of its tax and revenue anticipation note series 2026 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15 million in anticipation of receipt of current taxes and revenues during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2026. The notes shall be executed in the name and on behalf of the county by the true or facsimile signatures of at least two members of the board. And the true or facsimile official seal of the county shall be affixed there on two duly attested by the true or facsimile signature of the Chief of Staff or Deputy Chief of Staff of the county. The notes shall be general obligations of the county and together with any other tax and revenue anticipation notes issued or to be issued by the county during the county's fiscal year ending December 31st, 2026, shall, upon issuance thereof, be equally and ratably secured by a pledge of security interest in and lien and charge on the taxes and other revenues to be received by the county during the period when the notes are outstanding. The county shall and does hereby accept the proposal of the purchaser for the purchase or arrangement of the private placement of the note subject to and in accordance with the terms and conditions of the ordinance and the proposal. The sale of the note shall be for a aggregate purchase price not less than the aggregate par amount of the notes issued by the county plus accrued interest, if any, from the date the notes to that date of delivery thereof. The proper officers of the county are hereby authorized and empowered and directed to contract with the Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank, Dulmore, Pennsylvania, as the paying agent. The Chairman, and/or any other Commissioner of the Board or the Chief of Staff or Deputy Chief of Staff of the county, and all other proper officers of the county are hereby authorized jointly and severally to do any and all other things necessary to effectuate the issuance, execution, delivery, and the sale of the notes. Mr. Chairman, this is the first reading of ordinance 300 for 2025. It'll be up for vote on the 1st of November, the first meeting in November. Here to speak upon that is Attorney Brian Kozelansky and the CFO, Mr. David Bolzoni.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. And Attorney Kozelansky joins me. He is and has been bond counsel for Lackawanna County for quite a number of years. This legislation authorizes the issuance of a $15 million tax anticipation note for fiscal year 2026. The note will be issued as a private placement with Essex Securities as underwriter. The note will very likely be sold to Vanguard Investments. The benefit of transacting a private placement is ease and efficiency and the ability to negotiate rates directly with the purchaser. Unlike a bank-transacted note, the private placement is advantageous in a decreasing interest rate environment, which is what we're in right now, because the debt is not priced until mid-December, where a bank note rate typically becomes locked in at the time of proposal because of match funding requirements. Essex Security served as the underwriter for the 2025 tax anticipation note. Issuance costs may approximate up to $200,000, but they're factored into the rate that's assigned to the privately placed note, which is less than what we would be able to receive in a bank, from a bank note. And the cost would easily be offset by the investment of those dollars at closing until the time they're actually deployed where we need them in the general fund.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni or Mr. Kozelansky? Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it. And the final vote on this will be November 1st.
November 5th.
November 5th. Okay. Okay, next up is Resolution 25-0254.
This is approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 391-752-392 and 385 inclusive, totaling $2,865,447.10. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, $25,783,796.94. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 15th, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0243.
This is approving the submission of the PCC grant application. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Grant Application for Lackawanna County Treatment Court for the State Opioid Response Grant in the amount of $180,000. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 15th, 2025. Mr. Chairman and Treatment Court's Program Director, Mr. Gregory Betts.
Morning. Good morning, Commissioners. So this grant is for $180,000 from PCCD. It is a competitive 18-month grant. If awarded, it would start January 1st of 2026 and then June 30th of 2027. It pays for services from three key entities that we use, Treatment Court Advocacy Center, also the Recovery Bank, Outreach, and Goodwill Industries. So these are flat-rate services for folks who are both in Lackawanna County prison and folks who have been released through a reentry program. So we work with those folks who have substance abuse disorders. With in and also without of Treatment Court, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, anybody who we can touch through this grant, we can assist. And that is the basics of the grant. Pretty simple. Any questions?
Any questions? No, thank you very much. Great job. Appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0244.
This is approving a subscription agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Advent e-Learning subscription for juvenile probation to commence October 1st, 2025 and end December 31st, 2026, at a rate of $1,500 for the final three months of $25,000 for 2026. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 15th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Chief Juvenile Probation Officer for Lackawanna County, Ms. Melissa Pavlowski.
Good morning.
Good morning, again. As you heard Judge Regirio earlier speak about this, we are very passionate about it. Juvenile probation is seeking approval for a subscription agreement with Advent e-Learning, which is a web-based program that offers behavior-changing courses. Juvenile probation plans to utilize this subscription as a tool to help reduce recidivism, especially with our low-level offenders. Advent e-Learning will provide our youth with support tailored specifically to their offenses with such topics as substance abuse, bullying, corrective thinking, shoplifting, and anger management, just to name a few. We believe that this will prove to be a very beneficial tool for the impacted youth of Lackawanna County. We thank you for your support in this matter.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I think this is a great program, and just again want to tell you how much we appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0245.
This is authorizing the filing of LSA applications, ratifying the filing of applications with the Monroe County Local Share Account Grant Program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, for various projects as detailed. Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County. And whereas Lackawanna County has submitted grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Monroe County Local Share Grant Program on behalf of various agencies as per attached. And whereas the resolution authorizes the County Board of Commissioners and the Chief of Staff to sign and authorize all documents and accept any awards related to these Monroe County Local Share Account Grants, and that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize the submission of these applications on behalf of the above-named entities and their respective projects. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 15th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Economic Development, Ms. Kristen Magnata.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Commissioners. The county put forward an additional 24 LSA Monroe applications for funding. If you may recall, last meeting, we had 12. So in total, these were due on September 30th, but in total, we submitted 36 LSA Monroe applications. A resolution approving submittal is a requirement of Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. These have a three-year contract. It's no cost to the county, and the county actually receives a 5% administrative fee for administering these grants.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Director Magnata? Just one comment. The one that we put forward, The one that we put forward, the Lackawanna County Comprehensive Playing Field Study, that is in concert with Gus Fahey and...
Yes, Valley in motion. Yes. And we also put one other application forward for Lackawanna County, and that is for a rapid-response vehicle for our EMA department.
Great. The playing field study is something that we talked internally about a lot last year. I really think that there is a huge opportunity, and that's why we're trying to get money to do this study, for Lackawanna County sports facility indoor playing fields. There is such a need for that in our area. Anyone who has kids who is playing in these travel leagues, they really, they travel all over the East Coast. So if there, we have the ability to somehow get money for this grant and then have something in the next few years that was built, that is going to deliver a huge economic impact to Lackawanna County. And it's been done in other areas, I think, in the state. What, I can't remember the county, maybe Lehigh County, was it?
Yes, yes. And it would be a massive economic driver for the county, because, as you know, so many parents and children play in sports teams that travel, and we would be able to be a host site if we were to have a large recreational facility for Lackawanna County. So it would be a huge economic driver.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0246.
This is authorizing the replacement of the UPS device. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorize the replacement of an existing uninterruptible power supply device that supports the data-backup operations for the three-year maintenance agreement at a cost of $118,577. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 15th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our CFO, Mr. David Bolzoni.
Good morning, Commissioners, and I'm subbing for our Chief Information Officer, Mr. Brown, who was unable to attend the meeting today. This legislation seeks approval for a three-year contract with Valley Forge Power Systems to replace an uninterruptible power supply, which is a battery, in the county's data center. The contract includes replacement, service, and maintenance over a three-year period. The purpose of the battery system is to serve as a power conduit until a generator reacts to a loss of power, hence the uninterruptible power supply. Even the time fraction that occurs prior to the start of a generator in a power outage can be problematic for the data center operation. This contract is for $118,577. Valley Forge Power Systems is a Co-Stars vendor, and this contract will be paid from the 2018 capital fund.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0253.
Entering into an agreement with EHD, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners hereby entering into agreement with EHD to act as the contracted risk management consultant to assist the county of Lackawanna with a formal review of its property and casualty and self-funded workers' compensation programs at a cost of $17,500. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 15th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, is our CFO, Mr. Bolzoni.
Commissioners and Mr. Judge, who's our risk manager, is in attendance as well. This legislation will approve the retention of EHD as a contracted risk consultant to review the county's commercial insurance profile as well as its workers' compensation coverage. This recommendation was made in the Strategic Management Planning Program Report under recommendations FM number 10, page 61. This firm has worked with both PFM and the Pennsylvania Economy League in the Strategic Management Planning Program. They recently completed a review of Berks County's insurance profile and has conducted reviews locally for the cities of Hazelton and Nanticoke. The cost of the review is $17,500, and the report is expected prior to year-end, and I would say it's well worth the cost of the undertaking.
Absolutely. And not that it would be the same here, because Berks County is obviously different, but when we talked to this company, they did point out, correct me if I'm wrong, that when they did this analysis in Berks County, they found, I think, close to $2 million in savings kind of right off the bat.
Correct.
Right. So we're hoping that that happens here. But this is a great program, great idea, and as Mr. Bolzoni mentioned, it is one of the recommendations in the PFM report, so. Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0248.
Authorizing the installment payments for real estate taxes. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County authorizing installment payments for fiscal year 2026 and thereafter for county, education, and library real estate taxes. Whereas the county of Lackawanna is the third-class county organized pursuant to the county code of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, whereas Lackawanna County opposes an annual tax on assessed value of real property located within the county, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County believes it is in the best interest of the residents of Lackawanna County to allow quarterly payments to be made on the county and library real estate taxes. And whereas the Board of Commissioners needs to authorize a single tax office to implement a quarterly tax payment schedule for the tax year 2026 and thereafter for county and library real property taxes. And now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby resolve the following. Number one, a single tax office is hereby instructed to implement a quarterly installation, I'm sorry, installment payment plan for Lackawanna County and library real estate taxes for fiscal year 2026 and thereafter. Number two, the plan shall comprise of four installments. They will be due on the last workday of the months of March, June, August, and October for the given tax year. Failure to pay the installment by the due date shall incur a 20% penalty added to that installment. Number four, this resolution shall become effective 10 days following the approval. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 15th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Solicitor, Attorney Don Frederickson.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
In order to address some concern we have with regard to our taxpayers being able to make their payments at times... We were doing an installment plan, which is similar to one implemented by the city of Scranton, to allow our taxpayers to make payments quarterly as opposed to all at one time, so.
Very good. Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, on the question, this resolution may look to people like a small procedural item on paper, but in reality, it represents a meaningful step forward for taxpayers in Lackawanna County, especially for working families, seniors on fixed incomes, and small business owners who are trying to make ends meet. When I first took office last year, one of the biggest concerns that I heard from residents was how difficult it can be to pay the full amount of their property taxes all at once. For a lot of people, the single bill hits at the wrong time, when household budgets are already stretched very thin. This plan that we're putting forward today gives them flexibility. It gives them breathing room. So now you can pay, just like in the city of Scranton and with the Scranton School District, in four quarterly installments. So by allowing county taxes to be paid in those four quarterly installments, people can plan ahead, families can plan ahead, they can spread out their payments, and avoid falling behind. It's a simple change that I really think is going to make a big difference. I pushed really hard for this, because good government should meet people where they are, and right now, people are, including myself and my family, feeling the pressure of rising costs in every aspect of their life. So the least we can do is make sure that paying your county taxes isn't an added burden all at once.
Commissioner, just to add to that, also just a reminder that anyone who wants to pay early, the discount will still be in place also for taxpayers.
Okay. Thank you.
To take advantage.
They would have to pay in full.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0255.
This is approving the statement of work, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby retroactively approve the statement of work with RBA Professional Data Systems for the countywide installment tax billing plan at a one-time cost of $4,200. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 15th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, this is simply putting, paying the company to make the tax bills into four installments.
Okay. Very good. Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Second. On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0256.
This is accepting the Commonwealth's Arts and Cultural Recovery Grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby accept the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's COVID-19 ARPA PA Arts and Cultural Recovery Program Grant in the amount of $82,500 to distribute amongst the attached artists. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on October 15th, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Arts and Culture for Lackawanna County, Ms. Maureen McWigan.
Good morning, everyone. I realize no one wants to hear the word pandemic ever again, but this is actually a good thing to rectify a group of people that was left out during the recovery process. Self-employed artists, full-time artists, were not, they didn't have a lot of the money that was going to nonprofits or other types of businesses. So the state heard this, so DCD in 2023 issued another grant. Because we also have to understand that sector, it wasn't like life returned to normal right away. So a lot of income was lost for performance, craft fairs were canceled, you know, if your kid took dance lessons, they might not be going right away. So this money was issued to kind of rectify that and help people recover some of that loss. So we are Region 4, and we received this grant to manage the six counties could apply. We got over 100 applications, so it was a big process, and we had funding for 30, so this is what they are, but we had to be equitable across counties and disciplines, so.
Very good. Any questions for Director McWigan? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Next up, I'll entertain a motion to accept the quote from Scranton Rent All, 505 Center Street in Troop, for tents, heaters, and lights for the winter market at a cost of
Motion.
Commissioner Trumack made the motion. I'll second it. On the question, again, to speak on this is Director McWigan.
So a few years ago, we did receive a grant that has helped keep the cost of the winter market down to build our own huts, but we still need places. One of the feedback we got was people want a place to hang out, we wanted more activities for children. So these additional, excuse me, tents help us provide that to the community.
Very good. And you just want to inform people when the winter market is this year and anything else about that?
Yeah, sure. I know it's not even Halloween, but we're planning it. So it is the first Friday weekend in December, December 5th, 6th, and 7th. So, and the tree lighting will be on the December 5th, that Friday night.
Great. Thank you very much. So there's been a motion, a second. On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Next up, I'll entertain a motion to accept a quote from CLTS for the purchase of a forklift at the cost of $23,795.
Motion.
Second. On the question, again, Director McWigan.
So this investment, we think it's an asset for the county, because as events are growing and the winter market, especially to protect the huts, we needed a larger forklift, but it won't just be used for that, but it will be an important part. We had this discussion with maintenance, and we feel it will protect things and just be a good thing. We can also use it for other, like I said, events or maintenance on the courthouse, so that is why we are purchasing this. And we got three quotes, and this one was the most responsible and was under the bid threshold.
Okay. Very good. Any questions? Okay.
Can I just make, I'm sorry?
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Just because we're talking about the holidays, we also have our beautiful Festival of Trees, which will be on the Biden Street, and so we are looking for people to sponsor them, and the money goes to Toys for Tots, but this year's theme is Red, White, and You in honor of America's birthday, the signing of the Declaration in 2026, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it, and the motion has been passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the ordinances, resolutions, and motions. Next up is the opportunity for the public to address the board.
You know, Mr. Gahen, last time I was here, I asked for a moment of silence for Charlie Kirk, and you pretty much denied it, which I felt was insulting. I'm, do this here, I'm inviting the public to American Legion Post 121 and the Commissioners for the Annual Veterans Day Program at Lackawanna County Courthouse, North Washington Avenue side, November 11th, Veterans Day at 11:00 a.m. I filed a suit against the tax collector to present them, and the suit is a lawsuit for fraud and negligence against Tax Assessor and Tyler Technologies, and two, an injunction that stopped the assessor from certifying the tax assessment. You had stated the Commissioners couldn't do it, so we did it, and it's going to be stopped, so they're not going anywhere soon. The fraud and the way Tyler did it, they took the church that I have at Holy Cross Church and assessed it at $3.1 million. When the only price for it was $200, and they were going to tear it the hell down. So we got a lot of issues to deal with, and they're going to be accountable in the courtroom. And if we can't get it locally, we'll ask for an outside judge from another district, so our judges don't feel intimidated by doing this. On October 14th was a birthday for Charlie Kirk and General Eisenhower and myself, and by special delivery, I received yesterday a birthday letter wishing me a happy birthday from President Trump and First Lady Melania, which I was honored to have received for everything we've done around the country and recognize us, especially somebody from Scranton, Pennsylvania, and not Joe Biden's crony. I ask you to move McGlon's name from this here. Next time, I'm going to come in with a marker and do it myself, since we own this building. You know, the fun part was... What I'm going to laugh at, I was parked out front, Gahen, and you said I was double-parked. Well, I think you need a set of glasses, because first of all, I was legally parked in the veterans' parking, and the sign said veterans only. So I thought I'd just give you some help with that. As a veteran, and where I was parked, I felt it was very insulting that you made that comment. And the last thing I'm going to look at, or one of the things anyway, is that what we need to do is strain out some of the things that went on here beyond the taxes. You stood at the King's Rally, which I felt was insulting. Then you stood there and said, "I'm not here as a commissioner, I'm here as a private citizen with a family." Later on, there was a newspaper article written by one of the reporters that you made the comment, "Once a commissioner, always a commissioner." So I feel that the time you did that, you basically resigned as a commissioner. And what I'm going to do, just to make sure we understand where we're going, I'm going to find an action against you to have you removed from the seat based on your own personal comments. And last, I have a lawsuit being filed when the sheriff grabbed my shoulder here and ripped the muscles in my left shoulder on your orders that I was causing a disturbance and was sitting down. So thank you for your time.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Joan Hoda Wannett, Scranton. Excuse me if you've discussed some of these issues, because I came late, but Resolution 0245, the LSA Monroe Program for the grant submission, I noticed in the backup that the deadline for submission was September 30th. Were we able to do that, and we're just dotting i's?
Yeah, we're just supplementing, yes.
Okay, okay, that's fine. It's also the middle of October right now, and prior years, we've seen draft budgets released to the public for their review starting around mid-October. Can you tell us when the 2026 budget will be available for review by the public?
Yeah, we have a public hearing today at 2:00 Yeah, we have a public hearing today at 2:00 p.m. in this room, where we'll release the budget.
Oh, good.
Yeah, Mr. Bolzoni will have a PowerPoint presentation. He's going to go through everything, and then we'll take questions.
Good. And the only other question I had when I was looking at the backup, the tan. Now, that's a normal thing that's done in many governments year after year. And I noticed in the backup, it said that there was no line item in the budget for tans. Wouldn't it be a good idea to have a line item for that issue? You know, if we don't use a tan, you just put big fat zero. But I think it's a good idea, and you have done this in the last two years, you, and of course, Mr. Bolzoni, since he took over, educating the public with the financial issues that the county faces and how the budgeting process works. And so, you know, maybe you want to have a line item for tans, because it is a recurring thing, and it's normal. It's not that, you know, okay, we need a tan, and we've done something wrong. It's just to, you know, anticipating the real estate taxes coming in. So tans are quite normal, and you successfully pay them off by the end of the year. But I just think that I would like to see a line item for tans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Joan, I just want to thank you for your service on the library board. I know that you're retiring. Yeah, no, you did a great job, and really one of the champions of the library system. So thanks for everything there.
Oh, which reminds me.
Uh-oh. See what you did?
When we do have the budget ready for release and review by the public, please send a copy, paper copy, to the library.
We will.
Because a lot of people not having access to the internet will go to the library for that, and people should know, they just go up to the second floor, the reference librarians, and ask for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sir?
Hello, I'm John Early. I'm a Clark Screen resident, but I'm talking about land that we own in North Abington Township. It's located in a failed subdivision with the august name of Waverly Heights. When we got it, it had an assessed valuation of $4,597. When it was looked at by Tyler, magically the land went from $4,500 to $87,550. We were just shocked at that. That's a 19x increase in valuation. My wife and I took an appeal. In fact, we talked to, I can do that sometime, we talked to Mr. Tobin about it, and he said, "Oh, yeah, that's wrong. I'll talk to them, and we'll work it out." Well, June comes, and I get the same number, $87,550, $87,550. My wife and I took an appeal, followed the process. We put all our ducks in a line, and I thought we had everything taken care of, but your three-panel group lowered it, but only down to $32,530. So it went from 19x our value down to seven. But again, I thought that was a ridiculous number in that we showed up at the appeal process with a letter from the North Abington Township Supervisors outlining all the things that were wrong with the land. They said, I'll read in part, "The land you own in this section does not meet the two-acre minimum for a new build. The land quality possesses multiple problems for any intended future development. There's no record of any viable perk testing on this land. There is no discernible road access to this land, and there are no utilities at this parcel." We gave that, we gave the zoning requirements that'd be two acres. We only have an eighth of an acre. The side setbacks, which we can't meet. We can do, all we can do with this is basically camp on it. We also gave the Appeal Board a copy of, we tried to donate the land to a group called Cars for Kids. They looked on it on April 2nd at 6:35 p.m. April 2nd, they agreed to look at it, and they rejected by April 3rd at 9:14 p.m. They were done with it and said, "We can't accept land." They said, "We are unable to take it. We appreciate every donation officer, but financial and logistical considerations preclude us from accepting such donations." So we're not even able to give it away. We can't sell it, we can't build on it. Yet, it's still valued by the county at $32,530. We are not going to pay taxes on something like this. On the other hand, we don't want to walk away and just, you know, just have it go up as some type of share sale or something. We don't walk away from our bills. I'm right here, right now. I wanted to give the land, the $32,530 piece of land, to the county for your charge as a donation. We can't, the value you put on it makes it ridiculous for us to own it. On the other hand, I'm not going to walk away from the responsibility of paying taxes on it, so I am donating it to the county right now. Whatever your solicitor wants to submit to us, we will, you know, give you the paperwork, and it's yours. Here's paperwork that identifies the parcel. And I will say this, we weren't the only people going to the assessors. The township supervisors up there went and pitched to them that the numbers they were putting out were ridiculous. It made no difference to Tyler. They stood with these numbers that make no sense in any real world. So even when the elected officials of the township that are familiar with this knew about it, they couldn't, they couldn't get Tyler to move. We couldn't get Tyler to move. Mr. Tobin couldn't get Tyler to move. And as I said, even the panel we dealt with, they were very polite, but in the end, I don't know what more paperwork we could have presented to them that should have convinced them. So as I said, before the end of the year, I would be more than happy to give this land to you.
Thank you.
Want to hear from somebody?
You can give the paperwork to Don Frederickson, and he'll take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board? Commissioners, other business, Commissioner Trumack.
Well, first, I know he left, but I want to thank Sergeant Joyce for joining us today with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I want to thank all our veterans that are here today, and all our service members, active and retired, and Gold Star families for all their service and sacrifices. I do want to thank the judges and our excellent probation team that were here, juvenile probation team, for all that they do every day, and for Joe Ricardo for the work that he does with the Rotary, and for World Polio Day. So thank you to everyone that showed up today.
Thank you very much, and I don't have anything this week. We do have the budget hearing at 2:00, and if anybody would like to attend that, it'll be in this room. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor, aye. Aye opposed, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.